It's six o'clock. At this time, I'll call for the regular council meeting for Perry City Council Tuesday, November 21st, 2017. We have a call. Item three is the invitation from the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If you're able to, please write. I would like to call on Councilman and Reverend Willie King with Faith Bible Fellowship for our invitation.
Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity. But come Lord, we ask for wisdom that we hand to the members of our city. And all we have prayed out for each family represented in the name. We pray, Father, thank you that you're coming up and each family will enjoy their family and be blessed. Thank you, in fact, and we pray. Amen.
And fortunately, we have some members of PAC 419. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come forward. And if you'll turn around and tell us who you are and your PAC, please.
My name is Sebastian and my PAC is 419.
Gentlemen, we thank you for being here tonight. And if you would, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item four, recognition and presentations. Four A is a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday. Do we have anybody present who is representing Small Business Saturday? Would please come forward.
Just write them up. And if I can get out of here, I'm going to join.
I'm Michelle Rhodes from Moss Creek National, the president of Perry's Downtown Merchants Association.
Thank you. In the city of Perry, a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday, November 25th, 2017. Whereas, the government of Perry, Georgia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they've made to our local economy and community. According to United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States. They're responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas, small businesses employ 48% of employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas, on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. And whereas, 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important. And whereas, 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. And whereas, Perry, Georgia supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, James E. Fairclough, Mayor of Perry, Georgia, declare our proclaim November 25th, 2017 as Small Business Saturday. And I urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So proclaim that this 21st day of November in the year of our Lord, 2017, is signed James D. Fairclough, Mayor, City of Perry. Thank you for your contributions. Thank you for deciding to have a business in the city of Perry. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I'd like to present you with this proclamation.
Thank you very much on behalf of the Downtown Historic Merchants Association.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have a presentation for Mr. Penrose Wolf. Ed Beckham. I'm glad you showed up, Mr. Wolf.
I'm Ed Beckham, and I'm the chairman of the Board of Commissioners of the Perry Housing Authority. And I first just want to say that the housing authority is doing great. We've, a couple of years ago, we were kind of facing some struggles. HUD was cutting back on subsidies, and we kind of overstaffed. And we entered into a management agreement with the Winter Oaks Housing Authority. And they did a great job for the past two years helping us out. The biggest help we had, they sent Toya Harris down to manage the day-to-day operations of the housing authority. And Toya, will you stand up now, please? Again, Toya's been running the housing authority for the past two years. And I just want to thank Toya and also tell everybody in council that we hired Toya as November 1st as full-time executive director of the housing authority. So we're number under that management track. Yeah, just wanted to... We're doing very well. We're all excited to board. We've got a great board. We're all excited. I think we're doing so well that Mr. Penrose Wolf, who's been on the board for the past nine years, he finally trusted us enough to run it by ourselves. He has resigned from the Board of Commissioners. And if you'll make a presentation, Mr. Wolf, on behalf of the city and the housing authority on the issue.
Mr. Wolf, it's indeed my honor and privilege to thank you for your service in this particular capacity and your dedication for showing up at council meetings and slogging through all of the different times that we have had numbers to be presented, budgets to be presented. In addition to all of the duties on the Perry Housing Authority, you are truly a good fork, a smart man, and must have nothing else to do. But we do appreciate your service. This is presented to Penrose Wolf in appreciation for nine years of outstanding and dedicated commitment to the Perry Housing Authority. Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you. Really, Mayor, I'm glad I attended today. I had no idea, and I walked in almost late.
That's fine. Just in time.
I was on the housing authority board for nine years, and I enjoyed it very much. I worked with a lot of good people on there, including Mr. Beckham, who is now the chairman. And it was a real pleasure to work with those people and to see that Perry Housing Authority improved. It was, as Ed said, HUD was cutting back on the finances. And there may still be another cutback, I understand. And so it was tough slogging, but we did. The housing authority's fine. And I thank you, Ed, very much for your service. And thank you, Mayor. That's my honor. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Now, we'll have a presentation of a Plan First Award. I'll bring it over here if you want me to.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, congratulations on reaching Plan First designation in Perry. Our Commissioner, Perry's own Christopher Nein, sends you congratulations and greetings on this designation. Plan First is a program that rewards and recognizes communities that do an outstanding job of planning in the community, or the community too. And so we are pleased that Perry has been chosen. Your application was so good that if the board team we got, three did not need a site visit, and Perry's was one of them that was offered. But everything we needed was in the application. So we commend you on that as well. That is not always the case. Your benefits for Plan First designation are quite explicit. Points off, you take DCA loans and grants. And then the one that probably is the most important for you is a half percentage off of the two for one. City of Iona is second on fourth million dollars because of their Plan First designation of two. So it is quite a popular incentive to be a part of the program. And I don't know if you have sent your memorandum of agreement back or not yet, but it will come back to us if this report is signed, and then I will get it back to you. This is a three-year designation from now, from January 1st until December 31st of 2020, which is just somewhat hard to say. We will have another event at the Capitol in January, and we will present you with a plaque and have a committee with the governor, and that will kick off your official designation. So I bring you a suitable proclaiming, lovely certificate. So, thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
She just loves this sort of thing.
And we have some members of the Interfor company that wish to speak to us tonight.
So first of all, I'm the general manager for this particular site. Perry Crispa is our plant manager down there. Wayne Plant is production superintendent. Megan is our HR coordinator. And Tim Lowry-Moore is our public affairs, takes care of the entire southern workforce. So does an outstanding job. The reason we're here tonight is that, first of all, Mayor and Lee, thank you, and the city council, thank you for recognizing Interfor for this donation, to expand the Rotary Trail. So we've made a donation of property to recognize not only the communities that we operate in, but to the health of the entire community as a whole, as we reach out. I think it's important, you know, as a part of our recognition, our core values are to build value in the communities where we operate, and we're pleased to be here. We've had tremendous support from the people of the community, from the city council. We're very appreciative and happy to be here. We're looking forward to the opportunity to continue to develop a strong relationship in the communities where we operate. And thank you for your continued support, because it's been a great opportunity for us to move into this community and continue to grow this business. So thank you for your support. The donation is our pleasure. It's something that we take a lot of pride in, in helping the communities where we operate. So thank you for everything you do for us.
I want to take this opportunity to thank you and Interfor for being such a critical part of the community of the city of Perry for so long. That business has been there for... We don't always recognize our current existing industries as much as we should, but this is very appropriate. I want to thank you personally and on behalf of the city of Perry for deciding to continue to be in Perry, because we know that doesn't happen by accident. By the same token, this donation will also help the city of Perry in our both short and long-range plans. One of the things that we're trying very hard to do is connect all of our parks with often trails. And this particular donation is going to be a key ingredient and parcel to the extension of an existing trail down there off of Rotary Centennial Park and the weak trail going that way. We really do appreciate the donation. It's very timely. We're currently working on that as we speak. And I can't tell you how pleased that we are that you continue to support the city of Perry with your presence and with your donation. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yes.
I mean, we are, you know, Mayor, you and I have had many conversations about this. The city of Perry is extremely supportive of our operation here. We know we are highly visible, because we have log trucks coming in and out of this community on a rather reoccurring occasion. There's about 400 a week for those of you that don't realize that. So we employ, Perry, how many do we employ at our facility now?
123.
125 employees, full-time employees with benefits. We, Interfor's the, a lot of folks don't realize this as well, but we are the fourth-largest lumber producer in North America. And Perry is one of our flagship operations, and it really is. And a lot of that is contributed to the workforce that we have here, the resource and the supply chain that we have in this community, in this area. What I mean by that is the logging force and the landowners that provide trees to us, and that's extremely beneficial to us. And the support we get here is unbelievable, so we certainly appreciate that. You know, when you guys reached out to us about, you really made us aware of this parcel of land that we had on the other side of the creek of our operation, it just was an easy decision for us at Interfor to make, because we do see the value of being a strong corporate citizen. So you know where we're at. We appreciate the support you give to us, and we look forward to supporting you guys in the future, for many years. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And item four E, we're currently in the United Way campaign. I'd like to call on Ms. House.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Again, just giving you an update and a summary on our United Way campaign. We exceeded last year by almost $500, and we had four more participants. So that's really a good thing. I don't know that I'm influencing anybody, but I did contact them several times. Maybe that was what it was. Also, as part of the incentive, we offer a $100 Visa gift card if you pledge $52 or more per year. And we have five people that chose that over jeans and sneakers for the next year. And as part of that, I'd ask the mayor to draw from the six names that were available for the $100 gift card.
My name's not it.
Miss Fine Grace checked it, so. Randy King.
Thank you very much. Item five, our appointments to board's commissions and authorities. We have two. Five A is an appointment with Perry Housing, County Airport Authority, and five B is an appointment with Perry Housing Authority. These two items will stay on our agendas until they are fulfilled. We are working diligently to make these appointments, and we will, very shortly. At this time, we're not prepared to make an appointment in either one of these positions. At this time, I'd like to deviate from the agenda. Item six is next, with citizens with input, and we'll get to it in just a moment. However, we've got a friend in the city, Mr. Davis Tose, just present, and I'd like to call on him at this time for a discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Here I am again. We, especially this week, I just want to tell you how thankful I am that we're able to do what we can do in City Perry and to help the homeless animals and try not to get in a position of having to kill adoptable animals. There's three legs of the stool, there's really four legs. I'll talk about the other leg in a minute, but there's three legs of the stool that make that work, and it could be scaled up or down in any community. And the three legs have to be these three ladies, Lynn Gibbs with FOPAS, Melanie Salter with Westmoreland, and Angie Reed with Animal Control. No order intended, but they're the ones that really make what happens in this community work, where, you know, there's no magic in it, and it's a lot of work, and it's a lot of working together. And so we have operated with two things in mind, two goals in mind. One is to adopt the animals, and one is to keep the shelter under the capacity. And we've been doing that for years, because that's the commitment that we make to you and the city makes to us, that, you know, you won't euthanize separate space. So that's our job, one, is to keep the shelter not full. And I'm happy to report, year-to-date, we have adopted 214 dogs, 354 cats. And that's an unusual combination for most rescues, because you won't see cats that high, but we got a lot of cat lovers, and we do a lot of... And that's a lot, a lot of work, more than they probably care to remember. I want to consider this retention policy still a work in progress, because I know that there's been a couple of changes, and I appreciate those. There've been several changes from the very first iteration. But, you know, when you start boiling down really how we're gonna all fit together in the nine line items on one sheet of paper, it's very, very challenging. And you really don't realize the effect of something, you know, until maybe you start getting to the point you're gonna have to put it in action or start living under those regulations. The two that, you know, the two that kind of remain, one is not being able to participate at all in any adoption activities, which is not even a stretch, but, you know, taking animals that are ready for, ready to be spay neutered so they can go to the next stage in the adoption process is something that Animal Control knows when those dates arrive and, you know, transport them to... And then working with Melanie, Melanie Salter, who's kind of the... And I'll tell you one thing, when one of these ladies goes on vacation or something, the stool just kind of sits there and, you know, it's very noticeable. But anyway, coordinating with Melanie on the scheduling for, you know, to accommodate the veterinarians, and then, you know, us trying to coordinate on getting them to PetSmart, where we do most of our adoptions. So we just kept kind of doing things, and nobody's really stepped back to say who's responsible for what when you're all pushing in the same direction. That's the kind of atmosphere we try to maintain. And one of the good things about having this resolution, which I think we're still working through, you know, there's still some issues on here, and we'll make some recommendations, is that we really need, we really need a county-wide resolution. And that's happening in some communities. I'm involved with Fix Shorty Pets, which is a spay neuter organization, our office in Atlanta. But we go all throughout the state. We've been everywhere from, literally, from the northernmost part of the state to the southern and east-west. And our outreach is going into communities, having them decide what their goal is in that community, community meaning a county or a city or both. And then, once they make a commitment, then we bring resources. We've got, there's plenty of resources out there for spay neuter, and that's really the heart of getting animal populations under control. You know, really, that drives the whole thing to where we want to be, and that is not killing adoptable animals and reducing the intake into the community. Those two things is, I mean, to a person, I think everybody would agree, those are very, very important, maybe the foundational things to keeping animals under control. So Floyd County is the example that I, the most recent county that adopted a kind of a resolution. And I don't know, I hadn't really figured out exactly how it would go from, this is a county seat, but where you go from the county seat to all the cities and then the county, you know, overall, to adopt some kind of policy like this as a framework so that all the tactical things can be done to stay on point. And that, that would be a great thing. The other thing I want to mention is, and this is just an overall, I guess, comment, is communication is critical. Communication is critical, and the people that really know what's going on are the folks that are actually doing it. You know, that's the, and I've never, I mean, from House of Candy, Animal Control, and Alec Smith, you know, leader in the Animal Control community, I mean, known among people that are in leadership in Animal Control in the state, and Angie's been to a bunch of seminars, and they work together, well together. We've got a really good situation. We've got the, we've got the, you know, we've got Animal Control, we've got the Humane Organization or Rescue, and we've got the veterinarians. I mean, you put those three together, and they work together, and they've worked together. So let's look at this policy. Let's try to dovetail the policy into what's worked. I guess our challenge is to sit down and say, okay, what works? How do we write down what works? What often happens, and the reason that it's hard to develop policy that is strictly adhered to, is there's a million iterations of what they do on a day-to-day basis and how that affects the rescue and how that affects the veterinarian. I mean, sometimes the veterinarian does rescue. All the things are not bright lines and not lines in the sand or whatever, are not separated. So we're thankful, I'm thankful to continue to work with the city and certainly with the veterinary community. We deployed, and I'll sit down, but invite, you know, anybody that can to have something to say. Last year, we deployed $25,000 in the city for spay neuter. And, you know, it's starting to show. It's starting to, the rule of thumb is seven spay neuters per thousand population, you know, for owned animals in the areas of need will start to turn the tide. And you can do the math, you know, you can do the math easily here. I don't know, are we 15,000 now? I'm not sure.
Sixteen, three.
Huh?
Sixteen, three.
Sixteen, three, well, that's harder.
That made it harder.
Five, I could do. Sixteen. It's less than 100 spay neuters to put it in for, I know that's true. But if we can do that, and we've done that, and continue to do that, continue to find grants and that kind of thing, then you'll see, you'll see the results. I mean, it's a tried and true. So anyway, we're gonna keep doing that. I'd like to keep working on this, this right here as far as spaying kittens and keep saving animals. And thank y'all. It's been a great year. Gosh, we've got a beautiful shelter. We like to work together. We consider every one of those empty kennels a victory and an investment. I mean, it's a tried trick. So anyway, we're gonna keep doing that. I'd like to keep working on this, this right here as far as fine-tuning and keep saving animals. And thank y'all, it's been a great year. Gosh, we've got a beautiful shelter. We like to work together, we consider every one of those empty kennels a victory and an investment. So we're gonna keep doing what we do as long as we can. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would anyone else would you like to say?
Hi, I'm Karen Stein, I live here in Gary, I have lived here. I would just like to thank FOPAS for all the work that they do and the animal shelter here in Gary. I have four rescue dogs at my house, one of them came from FOPAS two years ago, maybe three years ago now, but I just love being able to know that the community does appreciate and all the hard work that they do.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Same here. They keep me busy, especially this one, and everybody, they keep me running. Putting into the community, I'm Ron Johnson, I'm new here, probably three months in, I come from Millithville and even further west. But I like to put into my community and this is definitely a place to do so and it really helps out and I think that even in Warner Robins, we get a lot of appreciation. Anywhere I wear the shirt or the hat, even on the Air Force page, everybody says, hey, thank you, I've adopted a dog and I recognize all the hard work that this puts in our community here. Like to see it stay open.
Whiskers will stay open.
Jesus, Ron.
We have a significant investment.
Yes, sir. Yes. More.
Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Margaret Sturman, and I've been with FOPAS for two years. And I can't imagine anybody not putting in and giving to FOPAS to save any animal that has been abused, neglected, left out in the street, dropped off at the center. If you all have come into the center, if you volunteered, you won't ever want to go anywhere else but there to help one of those animals because those animals to us are family. And we'll do whatever we can to help them, we spend a lot of time with them, we cry when we lose them, and we want to keep FOPAS and all the people that help with us every single day. So anytime you all have a minute, come up there, volunteer, see what we do day in and day out with love every time that we do it. We'd like you to come visit us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Lynn Gibbs, I am the FOPAS Director Coordinator somewhat. Lots of my people here supporting us tonight. I think Davis pretty much got all the key points. Basically, what we're asking is for the city to relook at the rules that they had made up and how FOPAS and the shelter will work together. There were a few things on the list that make it a little difficult for the easy flow that we've had in the past as far as from the shelter and the rescue and the vetting and the adoptions. It is a process where we all have to work together in order for this to be successful. We have worked very well together in the last few years and adopted many animals, we have saved many animals that otherwise wouldn't have been euthanized just merely because they had nowhere else to go. Most of the animals we've come into contact with are in their position not to thought that they're owned, but from the people in the community, bad pet owners, more or less. It is important that we continue to work together. We initially had guidelines that we were following that were working well, we would pretty much like to stick to. The recent guidelines that were presented to us had a few little things in there that made it a little more difficult for us all to function together and succeed in what we do on a daily basis. We would just like to ask Council if they would to review the original that FOPAS and the shelter had come up with and how we worked together as opposed to the one that we have now. Because we would like to continue doing what we do as we've done in each year. Our numbers have grown. Initially, when FOPAS started, I think we had maybe 200, then it went to 300, in the last few years, it's been 500. This year, I think from the numbers that Davis has at this point, we've already hit what we normally do in a year's time. And we do work on grant money and spay neuter in the community trying to stop some of the unneeded births of animals. But we would appreciate if you reconsider the original agreement, ask you the one that you guys have signed off on for us to go by at this time so that we can just continue to do what we do and make it work together. There's a lot of people in this town that love FOPAS, I'm being one. I've lived here for twenty-something years. When I first moved here, I did not know Perry had a shelter. It wasn't until my youngest son had to do a project in middle school that I found out Perry had a shelter. I was very sad to see what I saw at that time, and mind you, this was even more years ago than I care to remember, but in that, it encouraged me to step up as a citizen, to get into the rescue, which I started on ground floor helping organizations who were active at that time. And it has grown from there, from classes, seminars, training, hands-on experience. And like Mr. Davis said, if you, some of these rules that are made, you really have to be on the ground floor and see how we do, what we do. There is more to it than just a piece of paper with a bunch of words on it and saying you need to do this and you need to do that. So if you would, just please reconsider it and let's see if we can't make an agreement that everybody can work together on and agree with and continue to do what we have done for the community in the past years.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Back to the agenda, item six, citizens with input. Is there anyone present who wishes to address counsel on any item at this time? Item seven is the review of minutes. Item seven, any counsel of your consideration, you have been provided the minutes of the November 6th, 2017 work session to November 7th, 2017 pre-council meeting to November 7th, 2017 council meeting. Please note that Councilmember Walker was absent on the November 7th, 2017 pre-council and council meetings. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented. As a motion in the second, are there any additions, revisions, changes for discussion concerning these minutes? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Councilmember Walker, please let the record indicate that Walker abstains from those minutes. The motion passes. Thank you. Item eight is old business, 8A ordinances for a second reading and adoption. 8A1 is the second reading of an ordinance for the rezoning of property consisting of 7.73 acres from Houston County R-AG to City of Period R-AG, single-family residential district. The property is located at 120 Sparrow Street. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is a request by the property owner to annex the property as the city and to resign from, as you mentioned, county residential agricultural, city's residential agricultural district. The property is accessed off of Sparrow Street, which is a county street. The property is adjacent and contiguous to the city boundary, as you see, along the lower portion of the property on this map. The planning commission did recommend approval of the annexation and the zoning change to City of Period Residential Agricultural District.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any member of council having any questions of Mr. Wood regarding this issue? Thank you, sir. Counsel, this is the second reading, it is time for adoption of U.C. Fifth. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the ordinance that rezones the property of 7.73 acres from Houston County RAG to City of Period RAG as described. As a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Counsel, item 8A2 is the second reading of an ordinance for the annexation of the property consisting of 7.73 acres from Houston County RAG to City of Period RAG, single-family residential district. The property is located at 120 Sparrow Street. Any further to add, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, this is a second reading and adoption. However, for the annexation, I would like to add something for your consideration. There are certain times where we provide city services for various pieces of property. Sometimes it is a requirement or cost efficiencies that we partner with the county in order to provide the water. This is one of those instances. However, we do have a process and procedure within the City of Period and in order for that process to be complete, we are asking that, as a condition of the annexation, that the owner and all future successors of this property agree to pay all charges to the city and if not, that the water would be disconnected since the county would technically own the water meter and provide the water, the city will provide all the other services, but it would be part of a single system if that makes any sense. So at this time, because it is the second reading and time for adoption with the condition that has been stated, I'll entertain a motion that we approve or adopt this ordinance for the annexation of property with the condition as described. As a matter of clarification, Mr. Hallward.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, is anything other old business we need to address at this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item nine is any other old business. Item nineA is any other old business for the mayor, I have none. Item nineB is any other old business for council members. Mr. Biden, Grace. Mr. Walker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hux.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Mr. King.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item nineC is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item nineD is any other old business from the city attorney, Mr. Hallward?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item ten is new business. TenA are matters that have been referred from the November 20th, 2017 work session held last night and the November 21st, 2017 pre-council meeting to be held at 5:00 p.m. this afternoon. We have an item to address. Item tenA1 is a resolution to amend the personnel policy to restrict city employees from being appointed to various boards and commissions. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your work session yesterday, you discussed the potential conflicts and problems of having city employees appointed by you all to various boards and commissions. Your determination was that it would be in the best interest of the city not to allow them and that's what this resolution is.
Any member of council have any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this issue? Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. At this time, I want to entertain a motion that we approve the resolution to amend the city personnel policy to restrict city employees from being appointed to various boards, commissions, etc., as described.
Yes, sir.
As a motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item tenA2 is to authorize the establishment of a building inspector position in the Department of Community Development. Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you heard a request from the Director, Mr. Wood, for adding, because of the volume of work, an additional building inspector position into work session. We recommend that you sort of...
Mr. Gilmore, is there sufficient funding in our current place to accommodate this request?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, I know you had covered various aspects of the significant increase in volume such that one person is not able to keep up with it at this point, based on historical analysis and the current analysis that we have had thus far this year. And that is very good news from that standpoint. That means things are happening in the City of Period and are growing from that standpoint. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, sir. I appreciate the thought, the service.
Thank you, sir. Is any member of council having any questions of Mr. Wood or Mr. Gilmore concerning this item at this time? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we authorize the establishment of a building inspector position in the Department of Community Development as described.
Yes, sir.
As a motion is their second, and the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Item tenB are ordinances for the first reading and introduction. Item tenD1, this is the first reading of an ordinance that will amend the Period Code by deleting Article III Transient Occupational Tax of Chapter 15 in this entirety and it adds a new Article III Transient Occupancy Tax of Chapter 15. Ms. King.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the ordinance that you have before you is a recommendation presented by, from the Hotel Motel Tax Audit that was done by GMA earlier in the year. This will be replacing our current ordinance and this is given on GMA's model ordinance, which will protect the city and has all the updates, verbatim. Also, by doing it in this entirety as before, we were doing it bits and pieces and making changes, so this is one set ordinance that we can provide to GMA as posted to the, IDCA to post to the website.
Thank you, Ms. King. GMA is an acronym that stands for the Georgia Municipal Association.
That's correct.
And they have conducted numerous or several Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax audits for the city in years past and we have usually acted upon the recommendations as far as our ordinance is concerned in order to keep current law. Does any member of council have any questions of Ms. King concerning this item? Thank you, Ms. King. This is the first reading and introduction, therefore no action is required by counsel at this time. Item tenD2, counsel, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the Period Code by adding a subsection to Section 2224, a collection and disposal of solid waste. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is the first reading of an ordinance which would amend our code that would eventually require all of the dumpsters to have screening and be located on a hard surface. We recommend to you at your next meeting, of course, to adopt it. This falls out on a conversation that we all had previously, but there would be an extended time right in the course of this.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Is any member of council having any questions of Mr. Gilmore regarding this issue? Counsel, this is the first reading and introduction, therefore no action is required at this time. Item tenD3, counsel, this is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2017 operating budget. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as you may remember, each year we are required by our auditors to have a final budget amendment and this is the one that we decided to do that.
Thank you, sir. Details of that will be forthcoming in time for us to review and adopt. Any questions of Mr. Gilmore from council on this item? Thank you. Since this is the first reading and introduction, there is no action required by counsel at this time. Item tenC are resolutions for consideration and adoption. TenC1 is a resolution for approval of a Jeep along to finance our new water plant and wells. Ms. King.
Yes, sir. Again, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we're keeping up with the growth and the development here in the City of Period in lieu of a new water plant and some wells. We have made application over the last few months, presenting documentation to the Georgia Environmental Facilities Authority Board. Everything was completed, everything was filed, board approved the loan application on November 8th. The resolution that you have before you is for you and Mayor, you and Council, to authorize the loan for the financing of the well and the water plants in the amount of 7.8 million.
Thank you, Ms. King. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this? My understanding is that this resolution authorizes media's mayor and the city clerk or manager to sign on behalf of the city to obtain this. or manager to sign on behalf of the city to obtain this loan.
I would like to.
Counsel, you may remember, we have talked about this for the last several years, as part of a long-range plan in order to provide for current existing water for the City of Perry citizens, our commercial industrial base, but also industrial support that keeps our capacity and increases it where we can handle growth coming up. Mr. Gilmore, would the addition of this seven point eight million dollar loan cause taxes to be increased?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other, any questions for Ms. King concerning this item? Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution for the approval for Jeep along to finance the new water plant and wells as described.
Good.
There's a motion and a second in the discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item?
Just one other thing, too. We should notify Jeep about our plan for community to get additional discount on the interest number of this.
That would be very good. We've got to make it a certificate. Thank you. Item ten C two is a resolution approving the community development block grant policy and procedures. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, in your packet is the standard C D V G policies and procedures. The city was awarded seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for community improvements. One of the conditions with that is that you all have to approve, provided by these policies and procedures, and the same as what we have done for our previous grant, and we recommend to you to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item at this time? Hearing none. At this time, I want to entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution approving the community development block grant policies and procedures as described.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Motion and second, in the discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten C three is a resolution accepting the maintenance of certain infrastructure at Lake Forest Phase One. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, this is talking, the certain infrastructure at Lake Forest Phase One is the streets of Dogville Lane, Wild Isaiah Drive, and Wayman Court. Previously, the city has accepted the water sewer. City staff has now reviewed the streets and find them acceptable, and we're asking the city to accept streets at Phase One, Lake Forest Phase One.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Thank you, sir. Counsel, you have heard the presentation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution that accepts the maintenance of certain infrastructure at Lake Forest Phase One as described.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
There's a motion and a second in the discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Item ten D is the award bid. Item ten D one is bid number two thousand eighteen dash fifteen for mini excedite. Ms. King?
Yes, sir. Again, thank you. The documentation we have before you is for a mini excedite that you use for the gas, by the gas department. This particular piece of equipment is approved in the two thousand eighteen budget. Several companies were soliciting for this particular piece of equipment. We're recommending that the low bid be, I mean, be awarded to McKibben Equipment and Services of Tipton, an amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. And this will be paid for through the lease purchase, which is true.
For capital improvement, capital purchases for improvement.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. King. Does any member of council have any questions to Ms. King regarding this item? Hearing none. At this time, I want to entertain a motion that we award the bid in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-one cents to attend the equipment and services from Tipton, Georgia, as described. There's a motion and a second. Ms. King?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten E is the special event applications. Attending one is a request from the Perry Ministerial Association for the annual Christmas at the Square. It will be held on December the third, two thousand seventeen, at five thirty P M. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Mayor and counsel, this is a request from the Ministerial Association for our Perry tradition of longstanding Christmas at the Square, on Sunday, December the third. The event itself comes from about five thirty to seven. All of the December activities, organization starts about four thirty. And it requests closure, which requires also for Carol Street between Jernigan and Washington, and Ball Street between Commerce and. We reviewed our patients, all in order, and we do this every year.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from council? If not, at this time, I want to entertain a motion that we approve the request for the special event application for the Perry Ministerial Association for the annual Christmas at the Square, December third, five thirty, with the street closures as described.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
There's a motion and a second in the discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten B two is a request from the Perry Public Arts Commission for the fifth annual buzzer drop to be held December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, from seven P M. until one A M. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir. Mayor and counsel, this is a request for the fifth annual buzzer drop festivity, and the request for closures, it's a little confusing the way it's written, that's because they are asking for closures at different times. But basically, it's the streets surrounded the courthouse with the addition of all of Carol Street to Mary and to Washington. The, uh, we reviewed that patient, all that, everything's in order, and we already have planning the evening, and we're good to go.
Chief, is it not also included a special event alcohol permit license?
Yes, sir. I didn't know if you wanted to add that separately, but it is.
Notice, let's do it all together.
There's a special event alcohol license, we reviewed that, the vendor's in place. Oh, that's prior to two o'clock. The vendor is licensed, and it's appropriate, they fill all the squares, and the vendor will be having the country club, plus the downtown business, and the co- and the restaurants. This won't affect the other business, so this also on the side.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from council regarding this item? If not, at this time, I want to entertain a motion that we approve the request from the Perry Public Arts Commission for the fifth annual buzzer drop to be held December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, from seven P M. to one A M. That includes the street closures, the special event application, and the special event alcohol permit licenses as described.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Motion and a second, in the discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Gilmore, is there anything under item ten, new business that needs our attention at this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item eleven, is any other, is other business in the supplemental agenda? Item eleven A is a recommendation of a letter of credit for Charles Gray Boulevard. Counsel, you may remember, we had a discussion regarding this item in our pre-council meeting. The issue is that at the end of Charles Gray Boulevard is a tract of land in which a logger will, they will harvest some logs, and then they have requested to transport those logs over city streets. There have been several points of concern raised in the council meeting. I have asked city attorney, Mr. Holbert, to do a little more research, so at this time, I would entertain a motion that we table this item pending additional information from the city attorney.
Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
There's a motion, second, in the discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item twelve, council member items. Mr. Lionel Grace?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. King?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
And then Mr. Holbert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item thirteen, the department heads and staff items. We'll start with Department of Community Development. Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two items of public interest tonight. First, I'd like to just mention that the Perry Land Development Ordinance is coming forth to the city council for consideration on December the fifth. That would be a public hearing. The ordinance has been reformatted. There are substantive changes relating to use regulations, parking and loading, landscaping, buffers and screening section, tree protection, non-conforming uses, and enforcement. The public hearing will be before city council on December the third, six o'clock in this room. Copies are available for public review on the city's website, perry-ga.gov, on the Community Development tab, and in the Community Development offices. And I am available for questions regarding that prior to December the fifth. And secondly, as Mayor, as you proclaimed earlier tonight, Saturday is Small Business Saturday, and just wanted to remind everyone to shop downtown Perry. The participating shops will be open this Saturday after Thanksgiving from ten A M. until four P M. The event is a partnership between the Perry Downtown Merchants Association and Perry Main Street Advisory Board. The event will feature a passport shopping promotion with participating merchants for a chance to win a drawing for three hundred dollars in downtown dollars. And holiday shoppers may also take photos at three holiday-themed cutout photo opportunities, which will remain in place throughout the Christmas season. They are located at Route, uh, let's see, Routen Park, did I say that correctly? Which is at the intersection of Ball and Carroll Streets, and on the lawn of the former courthouse, which is now the Houston County Government Building, and also on the eight-hundred block of Carroll Street. So, don't forget, Small Business Saturday. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. From the Department of Finance and Administration, Ms. King?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. From the Department of National Services, Mr. Dyke?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, I do have some updates for you and our audience tonight, some of our activities that we have, New Services. First being our movie last Friday, Fantastic Beats. I'd like to thank our media guests. You guys did a great job getting that out. We had a nice story on that. Had about seventy-five participants take place. It was a really nice evening. So, we will probably do another movie before spring. It's, I mean, preferably not like last year, thirty degrees, even you and I sat without a lot of people watching. Good movie, though, wasn't it? It wasn't, but John Wayne movie. It was cold. But it was definitely good. Also, we'd like to let everybody know that Perry Arts Commission is having its first-ever festival of trees. You've probably seen a little bit on social media, you'll see some more of it. In a nutshell, instead of me butchering it up, it's, uh, it's an event where different entities, businesses, groups have purchased an artist's tree and decorated it to whatever their theme is, and there's going to be a little competition like that. A lot of towns would probably do this, so it's just kind of a first attempt at getting into the Christmas season. And again, I encourage you to check the Facebook and media, because there's different hours and dates. It starts on Thursday, the thirtieth, and it will end on Sunday, December the third, so it's right around the corner. It'll be a fun thing to see if you want to take part.
Where is that again?
It's going to be this year down at the, uh, at the Chamber. Yeah, not the new location, but the one where they're currently at, the venture division that you're up.
Yes.
Basketball season has started, so ball has come to an end. We had a champion team, the Hurricanes, from our group, won the Austin Bulls. We're very proud of them. We had a couple of other groups that got runner-up, so our kids did well. Basketball practice starts Monday after Thanksgiving, so if you have any that are involved, we'll let those kids practice for about a month, and then when Christmas is over, we'll start our games. Probably our biggest league, so if you do have friends, neighbors, or families that come and watch us play, it's, it's a little bit more interesting than the pros. Sadly, you'll have a good time. Last and not least, I recently attended the G R P A conference. That's the State Georgia Recreation Professionals Conference, where folks like myself and my colleagues go every year for a training similar to G N A and some of the other things that we do in local government. And I wanted to share that everything we're doing here in Perry, quality life, and what this body has done long before I moved here, it is on the path that all the other professionals in my industry are trying to achieve. I think in five years, when we finish some of the major projects that got going on, we will be setting the standard for communities of this size, that they will be coming to us for assistance and the goals and how we get, how we got where we're going. So, as a professional and as your director, it's, it's really nice to be amongst your peers and have those kind of conversations, so I'd like to just let you know that all the hard work and all of the planning and the things that we have, you know, been doing together are exactly on point and the direction very bright for the future for our residents and our community. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir. Just, just one quick thing. Some of you in the room may have heard that we passed the visitors for the last week and a half, shooting a little movie, shooting some movie here in Perry. Look at that, right? Yeah, I actually found out that. Anyway, that ended shortly before dark tonight, and so the building is, is done. There may be a little removal of equipment from all of those by orders.
Can you make it down?
It's one of those.
Thank you, sir. And that's a good thing. Anytime the film industry selects Perry specifically in this area, shoot a film, that's huge. They bring in a lot of people, they have a fairly deep pocket, and they do nothing but increase the economic well-being of our area. We welcome them with open arms. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the work you and your district have done. Secure the site.
It was interesting. Brian Gosden's not ugly. My wife and daughter's in, so I got a chat.
You have good control, you love. We gotta go home.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Murray, you got any?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item fourteen, the general public items. Is there any member of the general public who wishes to address council on any item at this time? Item fifteen, the mayor items. Just a couple of things. We will have a walk with mayor and council a week from tonight. We moved that to five, didn't we? And I'll have it with me. Can someone remind me where we're needed?
Lake Forest.
It's Lake Forest. Please, if you have, if you don't have anything to do, please join us. The Walk with Mayor and Council was started a number of years ago, and it has turned into one of the three here, things that we do on a monthly basis in order to interact with the citizenry. You don't have to live in that area in order to participate. Please show up, and you will have my ear and council's ear for at least a mile. And if you can't walk the whole time, the fire department's going to have a transportation in the form of a God car. So, we welcome your participation. More than that, though, we welcome your comments, and that's where we learn quite a bit about not only what's going on in the city, but also seeing the various aspects. I mean, you've heard me say this before, it's one thing to drive through the city's period, the City of Period, outside, slow you go. It's entirely a different thing if you walk it, because I promise you, you will see things you didn't notice before, and you should, because you should be concentrating on driving, right? Chief? It's a great event. It moves all across the city. Every month, we will have another one in January, but we will have, and we will not have one in December typically because of the holiday season, but we will have one in January. Uh? It was the town hall in place, so. That is next Tuesday. The next time we meet as a council will be as a work session on Monday, December the fourth, at five P M. in this room. Then we'll have our pre-council and council meeting on December the fifth. Pre-council's upstairs in the conference room. Council meeting's down here at six o'clock. All of our meetings are open to the public. You're more than welcome to attend. The day after tomorrow is Thanksgiving. Please, if you haven't, and know someone who is suffering... Please, if you haven't, and know someone who is suffering and helpful, um, and, and let your conscience be your guide, there, we are very, very fortunate in the city period to be blessed on a daily basis. And you see some of the evidence of that, of those blessings all throughout this town and this community. But we would be remiss if we didn't remember those who aren't as blessed as we are and helpful. Again, please be careful if you're traveling, it's one of the most travel, traveling times between now and New Year's Eve. Please be careful. And I've got to say it, when you're traveling and when you're driving... Slower traffic, keep right. You have to get a ticket now for that, and I've seen them do that, but that's gotten to be a pet peeve of mine. That doesn't mean I fly everywhere I go, but... And if there's nothing else to come, of course, thank you for your interest and participation. Happy Thanksgiving. We're in.